All right. So, six thirty-two, we will call a new order. I guess we don't need to do roll call attendance anymore. I mean, but Mrs. Manzelli is not listening. Everybody has attendance. So, this thing is been recorded.
I have about six informational items. All the information should be in the board track, but I did want to mention two different items.
I just want to pull up. You go first.
I just didn't see anything, and maybe I missed it. I was, uh, some of it's in school district meeting on May first. So, is that on here? And I just didn't recognize. But it's on here. If you're not who we have, that's all. So, we can talk about our duties as school workers first.
We can, um, but I think that we left it last time. This is fair for me to get back to me, let me not have to repeat it. Um, so, well, we can check their notes, see if that even does or anybody else can read it.
Sure. My understanding is that we're going to talk about Sunny Reeves amongst herself, who was going to sit up front, who might be a life runner and those sort of things.
Sure.
And this is our last meeting before the May first meeting.
I'll add a seven.
Thank you.
Anything else? All right. On to last hour's minutes. We have six twenty-four meeting.
Before, there is a motion. I have a couple things regarding that on page eight, about midway down. Um, it says that a motion to review on a case by cases, the limited use of school facilities for the Pembroke School community and the town of Pembroke for school use through the end of the school year is made by Mrs. Huang. Um, the town of Pembroke, there, that for school use, that prepositional phrase is in the wrong, um, space. It should be associated with the school community. Um, the town of Pembroke, that is not limited for students, that motion. So, I just want to make sure that's clear because let's say the planning committee wants them to care. There was never the intention to restrict town business from the Pembroke school. So, that's one correction. Um, the other is on page fourteen. And it looks like our votes were recorded in reverse. So, this one's regarding the motion to allow mobilization for the town Pembroke to use PA for town purposes. Um, we're talking about voting. So, on a roll call vote, it says, "Mrs. Manzelli, yes. Mrs. Lionel, this is the line. So, this is Mr. Gals, yes. Uh, Mr. Cameron, yes. Um, and that it is in favor to opposition to the motion being carried." Those votes were actually blowballed. So, no votes were aimed at any change. So, yes, votes were handed myself. And that motion actually failed. So, that is a correction, uh, as well. Thank you.
Sandy, is that something you can confirm? Because otherwise, I'm going to want to table these and try and pick the most relevant. Because I just don't really have.
I don't completely agree.
Okay.
What was? But then the notes would have been. I, I might have switched it.
Okay. All right. So, um, are there any other questions or concerns you think? I'm going to make the votes and table them until next time, so we can do that. Well, I'll make sure that we get that right. Second. Especially around the. All right. Uh, all in favor?
I.
All right. Both say yes. Great. Okay. Thank you. Um, everybody, so agenda item number four, first public comment section. And as a reminder, we've got a semi-formate, and you have to be present to comment. Um, I will bring my. We are sorry that we have eleven, three over three minutes. Please try to get our comments whatever way you want. And if you have to take two minutes, that's okay. Six thirty-seven. My balls to speak. Go ahead, talk. And to stop, where you go? I'm sorry.
And say your name?
Yes, and say your name. Sorry, Sandy. See another. We will move on to service window to the three minute.
The consent item we do have is those confidential student matter. So, if there's discussion, which we have that one public, we may run, move that to the end of the agenda. Unless the board has been gone to make a motion and approve it without discussion.
I'm, I'm ready to move forward, but I'll leave it up. Everybody's ready to move forward, we can accept a motion, otherwise, not public. On time. Yes, that question we'll table, we'll publicly discuss. All right. All right, so we'll move that. All right. Six fifty-three, the ratio is six nine. All right. So, then, agenda item number seven, we need business on medium, seven eighty, we have the presentation from CPAC, which is Special Education Parent Advisory Committee. And we've got Mrs. Bellum. Smith, Breger, unless there's some slants. Um, I'm going to. Excellent.
I was just going to say, I'll give my best, and I've gone with the mask.
That's simple.
Sandy, that's awesome.
Do you want to say who's getting the votes? I'm going to select your names.
So, just for those following.
Yes.
There is a slide deck with the company's, what, Mr. Knowles, they presented, she got it to board. Um, X on Friday, December last, you have the course, you remember it? Um, I don't know if that will be important, I'm not sure if we can follow along. If not, I mean, if you can't find it and you want a copy, send an email to me, Sandy, Patty, Kathy, Glover, and we'll make sure that we can see it.
And it is in the board packet. Just people try. Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you for being on the agenda. And we have passed the opportunity to speak tonight. So, what I have is just a quick presentation of CPAC Pembroke, which is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. I won't bore you with everything, but I'll tell you some of the goals, what I mentioned before. But my name is Melanie Kellam, and her mother, children who receive special education services. I'm a Girl Scout leader in Pembroke. I'm graduating in May, actually, just look at the date exactly, thirty days with my heart in. Um, I'm a previous state in New Hampshire teenage and jazz employee for eight years. And I'm the current chair of the Community Bridges Family Support Council. And this is Lauren, to be more interested. Okay, so Lauren, this is Lauren Wire. She's a mother of her child who receives, uh, special education services. She's a Girl Scout leader in Pembroke. She has a master's degree in art of teaching English. She is a Community Bridges Family Support Council member. She's a New Hampshire leadership graduate and a task community organizer of the New Hampshire. So, next, I'll just kind of tell you what CPAC is. So, CPAC again is the Special Education Parent Advisory Council. We were funded in twenty eighteen with great funds. Um, it's a volunteer parent organization. Um, by definition, a CPAC again is a parent advisory group. Best practices call for a parent journey process that works closely with schools and the larger community. When parents are trusted and valued as advisors, they're empowered to advocate for changes that can result in positive outcomes for all stakeholders, and they're less likely to feel isolated. Parents and school leaders establish positive relationships to work together in the best interest of all of its students. And then, how CPAC is different is, so we're not like a PTA or a PTO or a school council. Um, a CPAC doesn't represent families from one school. It serves families from children of differing abilities helping inspire school districts. It is open to all parents of children with different abilities and other interested parties. Um, and I did want to say that it's important to note that CPAC is not a support group. It's not as advocacy group. It is not for individual student advocacy or support. It's the mission, I really got the notes. The mission is to provide community resources for family that can positively impact the family unit, which then can impact the child in their classroom. This is for things that are like outside of our own education, more than access senior curriculum. It's like at that IDP team meeting, where you have a really great idea, but you can't really tie it to education. It's a referral to that type of thing. Um, no, we haven't been in. So, it's for those type of hot moments that you really wanted to do things. Some things that have come up in our local community has been like therapeutic force therapy. Now, that's really good, and it's really good for children to learn to have to calm around giant animals. It's therapeutic with motion and sensory. So, that could have all held in your school environment, but that's not really education. Well, there's actually tons of grants and scholarships out there to help families do that. So, that's the type of thing that this CPAC is. So, I did want to say, there are CPACs in New Hampshire. Actually, Concord just approved theirs. It was just in the news. Um, Derry, Paulus, Hudson has been operating now seven for a long time. They were one of the first ones. Tier charge regional school district Pembroke, but they're white male regional school district. Some interesting information is Massachusetts state law requires every public school district to establish a CPAC. Um, the New Hampshire tried to do this last year. House rule fourteen seventy-three, requiring schools to have Special Education Parent Advisory Council passed in New Hampshire House in March of twenty twenty, but it was tabled in June of twenty twenty with all the other ones in the Senate in progress. So, this bill is likely to be reintroduced. So, a collaboration now between the Pembroke school districts and the Pembroke CPAC will put us ahead of any future state mandates. Um, so CPAC can help families connect with community resources like social service organizations, libraries, colleges, universities, recreation programs, um, and other organizations that provide expertise and resources. These organizations and resources can affect the student and the student. And then, some of the things that, so CPACs can help connect families that are moderate connected to their local area agency and other types of community support systems. So, local area agencies, not just to give them experience. Our local area agency, if you're connected with them, um, has a family support council. We have our own budget. We have our own strategic plan. So, some of the things that we have done is providing resources for rescue care. Get the parents out of the hospital, get them a break. Um, technology grants, scholarships to summer camps, dance lessons, music lessons, workshops, therapeutic force therapy, adaptive bikes, adapted equipment that's powered by insurance. We've done family campings, evening poker, we've done dinner, drive-in dinner and movie events, and parents prepared sessions. Um, effective CPAC can help improve educational outcomes involving for all students. Um, it can help identify that family and or student needs and resources. It can, and help improve the overall culture and climate of the community, and it does help foster community culture and inclusion acceptance. CPACs are win-win. Um, parental input is valued, and there's a vehicle for meaningful communication. Parents are empowered to facilitate change that matters. When parents and district leaders work together as partners, CPAC establishes trust, open communication, improved effectiveness. School district leadership and personnel play an important role in developing and growing and helping us sustain a CPAC. So, what exactly are we looking for? So, we're looking for a collaboration, partnership with the Pembroke Special Education staff for workshop ideas. What workshops are they looking for? We have access to different grants and scholarships out there, assessing the needs of the family, providing announcements for upcoming workshops, and providing educational opportunities for family, staff, and self advocates. And this is the cool thing is, what would it cost the districts? And nothing. So, Pembroke CPAC is funded with very much. I'll let Lauren talk more about it, because she got all the grants. And then, I just put my contact information at the end, and I guess I will ask Lauren if she wants to add anything. And if there are questions, if any, must allow that the board will want to answer questions. I'm also assuming that we have to speak into the microphone, so that it's recorded, right? So, um, yeah. Do you want to hold this? Um, okay. One of the things that we do provide. You know. It's that. One of the things, one of the things that we do too, in our workshops, for example, just different resources that we get to. And I can count this as a amount. Um, clean, this is all like the state of the New Hampshire requires to get. I'm sure the MVP and that, I'm sure, I don't care who knows a little bit of this. It reads like stereos. Seriously, take a look at this thing. It's, you don't even need to see it, do you? You're like, oh, let's pass it down. You've got special education background, you guys is all okay, let's go. You have special education background. Seriously, Danny, just look at that front page, just like read that right away and tell me what you're like, oh, there. Look at all that, right? It's, it's, it's just god awful. So, when we have workshops or when we have meetings, this is what we provide to parents, okay? This is what they get. So, when you're starting out with special education process, so my daughter, um, we started, oh, no, she went to her TLC program, and she's three years old, and we had the best experience in Pembroke ever. Um, but this is, this is, um, a lot of us got together because when you look at that, that's going around. And I have a master's degree in teaching English. And I have arts in that. So, what we're trying to give parents is just something different. Sorry, we didn't name one, but we're just, we're trying to hand this back to the board. But this is what, this is what we have. So, take a look at that. You're a hard one. You know, we have smarts, but take a look at that. So, you're going to see acronyms in there, which is really important because I could, I could call Patty or I could call Karen Yersher, right? I could say, oh, my gosh, I, you know, I'm so confused. I have an FBA, you know, like we're trying to get a new IDP. I think I need like a CBI, or like I've got, I'm talking my LEA. Now, Karen's going to know what I'm talking about. Yeah, he's going to know what I'm talking about. You guys, that's going to go straight over your head, right? Like, those acronyms are important, just little things that it takes us parents years to figure out. We're trying to assemble something that is very simple for parents, right? So, they don't have to work as hard. And we feel like this is an opportunity as we climb down the line, and this is where Pembroke can do better and be a part of the game. And this is something we can really, really worry about. I hope you guys feel the same way. Like, we're just asking for partnership tonight, nothing more, something that's going to, you know, further help our parents and our kiddos. And I can tell you what, with COVID right now, that isolation is real. It's real. And so, that's all I have. Do you have any questions? I'll hear you answer questions.
So, um, um, thank you both very much. Um, I think there will be conversations around this, but right now, I was thinking, do you have any questions? Maybe somebody?
Um, thank you very much. This is awesome. Like, especially the acronyms and just, you know, daughters saying, you, 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 you like that. So, this is awesome. But the, um, the thing I would just quickly, quickly, is, does this include children with a medical disability? Yes, especially. Yes. Yes, it's, uh, it's resources. So, we, we're here to basically, um, help navigate the whole process. We have all of these state resources, um, that are available. They're currently funded. It's just, as a parent, when Melanie and I got through this process, it's just yours to figure out where things were or go. And we thought, oh, gee, but it wouldn't be awesome, you know, when our kids, because also, we go through, um, basically, like, you go to Bridges, right? Like, you get these early interventions, and they boot you out when your child is three years old. And then, it's kind of like, where do I go from here? Yeah, and so, it's for IDPs. I'll just take it real quick. So, it is for whether you have IDP or five or four. It can even be for kids that are like on the cusp that, you know, are struggling a little bit, is medically. There are tons of programs in our state that we qualify, even them, to provide resources. Whether it's a summer camp, or they need a social group, or a life skills program, there's tons of programs there. So, basically, this is just like the resources in New Hampshire that you've done all the legwork and brought it all to one book. Right. And we, I would have paid thousands of dollars if it was twenty years ago. And it sounds like, and that's kind of like, what we want to share it, so not to annoy you guys all. My kid was one pound and born fifteen weeks early. Of course, while she was born, eleven, because they know the video, they sent email. I was a DHHS employee, so when I got stuck, literally, all those departments were there. When I got stuck, was it, they'd tell you, go talk to your, go talk to your. And that was just a combination between professional and personal experience and her education background, just compiling it all together in a workplace. That's pretty much what it was. Thank you. I'm sorry, I do want to piggyback on Ann's question. So, a student doesn't have to be diagnosed with a learning disability where it suspects that a student has a learning disability, that you can reach out for information to the CPAC as well? Yes, absolutely. If you go to that binder, you'll also get to see how the special education process works, which is also very complicated. Um, so, uh, COVID has happened, but I did talk to a parent the other day, and they were very confused because they don't know where the evaluation starts or where child by starts, or, um, so it's just that it's nice to be able to, now, we're not advocating. This is not like, there's no advocates. We don't do that, but we can say, here are resources, right, for you to, to seek out. And this is how we can help. And of course, we don't, we don't advocate. We are an organization, we're a grant-funded organization, um, volunteers. That's not what we do. But we can sell, here's some information, here is where we can go, uh, because it is very confusing. It's, it's, it's very confusing. And just trying to reach out and make this easier for, for other parents. And then, um, you know, it's like Jerry, like, when you get in there, you get the little kids. You know, we get them right after TLC, right? And then, but like, I think with Miss, uh, Witness Kellam, Mrs. Kellam and myself, we met because both of our kids were at TLC, and we have this amazing program, you know, like, tall children, it's amazing. Um, so, I think that because we were able to do this when our kids were three, we had a lot of supports, but a lot of kids don't yet, and they, if they're joining when they're five or they're six or seven, so this is just an avenue that we can provide parents to just help. And I just, I'm just trying to, yeah. So, what I did want to say too is, I do want to say that Pembroke has an amazing special education team. I know I can follow or whatever I want to, I know Karen's going to pick up. This is for those moments where you really have this great idea or the team that really thinks that this would benefit the whole entire family, or whether it's a community thing, or sending them to more dinner, drive-in, to meet some of the kids their age. This is just a way to filter those other resources that don't fit in the normal. Not everything can be done in school. It is a lot to a whole child. Not everything can be done in school. You can't do everything in those six point seven numbers now. But what we're asking for is for your help. If you guys can please help us, because we're going to have a lot more outreach that you guys are working with us and that we're not working on. So, I guess that's what we're asking for, if that makes sense. Any other questions?
Awesome. Thank you. Um, so, I guess my first thought is, we had discussed last meeting, um, that in a couple more meetings, we're going to dedicate a lot of time to setting goals for the end of the year. So, what I'm going to do is add this to that list and have one of our lists for the coming year be to establish. So, I, I think, I think the best way to end the report is to add a board goal to be to kind of work to set up this relationship and see what the best way is. I am certainly not educated enough on both sides of this issue to know the best way to do that. So, it will be, you know, talking with special, talking with Patty and seeing what the best interplay is between these two groups, um, playing all sounds like awesome stuff, that, that both sides can benefit from. So, I look forward to whether you want to know it for sure.
For Karen, for the model. Anyone who knows me knows that my, my is in parent education. So, one of my voluntary goals in, in this district and assisting you has been to do more parent groups, parent, um, training, those types of things. I love it when someone gets a parent call and asks me the questions because then I can explain it because you can't get everything you need from a whole or a family, like, with procedures. Say that if you do have a procedures plan, or you should kind of explain the, you know, the problems that I'm already having, that's your homework. Um, but there's so much more to it, and especially the parents coming in, like, like, um, for, and, and lots of it. All of it is a dad's job, and to get kids in, you know, three-year-olds, four-year-olds. We do a great job with child by, you get your kids in at that age. But when you have someone who's trying to navigate the process, where in their case, seven, eight, nine, ten, thirteen years old, it's, it's much more difficult. So, um, that's something I'm highly interested in, and we'd like to see more of having necessarily doing some, some joint, um, projects, even with the other towns, things like that. Um, because I think that we can share a lot. We have all the resources here. We have a person to, to work with this, so.
I just have a question. I heard, um, collaboration, partnership. I just want to be clear on what to ask, since I know we have another, um, group called PALS. Are you looking for something similar to PALS where the school does pass along information that PALS has, PALS supports the school? Are you looking for something similar?
Yes, we are looking for something similar. Okay. Something similar. So, also, this is, this is free. Now, of course, we're not going to do fundraising for the schools. Like, that's not, that's not our position either. But we are looking for, you know, for example, um, if there's a workshop opportunity to come back where we are pretty engaged in what happens at the state, like, there's something that pops up, um, it would be nice to get Karen a call and say, this is PALS. You know, is this something that we can, that we can send out? You know, we're, we're willing to do the letterwork. There's no issue there. We can do the letterwork. I'm a star, and most of this all right-handed. This doesn't cost a penny, not a cent, which, you know, as a taxpayer, I like that a lot, you know? And then, yes, if, uh, like, PALS will have, uh, PALS has bulletin boards, or we put things on bulletin boards at the schools. Um, volunteers go out to back PALS. So, partnerships, sort of like what happened to PALS. And if we do also use, if we could use the auditorium here, Dr. Morris, that would be fantastic. I should even know. Or even the cafeteria, that would be wonderful, because right now, we currently use the library. It's great, like, right now, which you can't right now. So, but that's, that's what we're asking for. But this wouldn't cost anything. It'd be very great, and we're, again, we're willing to do letterwork. And then, also, though, um, you know, Karen, Patty, like, our special education staff, they could, you know, I have an LEA who are giving acronyms again, right, nature of the design of this. Um, we can, we can, if they find something interesting, that's something with your help, we'll go to base, we'll shoot that out to parents. We're just really looking for a partnership, not a one man. And I think that we're going to get our kids, we're going to get our families. It could benefit them with a classroom, and it might help.
Use the mic.
I said it would benefit in the classroom, that's the thing too. Some of these, like, life skill things and some of these programs that are out there with scholarships and grants and stuff, you can take those skills and move them to a different environment. It could actually help out the classroom too, with the admissions and the teachers. Yeah. We can, where we can also help too, I talked to Dr. Morris about this because I know I'm preparing this for, for this, we're live, October's eleven right now, and I have to prepare for transitions that happen at fourteen. And that, essentially, that's, you carry that over here. And that's something that we can help parents with as well, like, here are some other resources outside of what happens at school. So, you have this nice partnership, and you get something that happens in the community, and, like, everybody's speaking with each other, and you have this synergy, I'm gonna, which I think is fantastic.
I always wondering, I was not here, whatever relationships formalized with PALS, if we could ask for super attendance. I don't want to take a part away from CPAC, but if a similar relationship is being desired, maybe we could ask for this, but what that. maybe we could ask for the people that, what that relationship with PALS looks like, so we understand what's being asked. Thank you. I think PALS was before my experience, so, they've been, since Sandy shaken her head to, forever. Um, and I've been here for twenty years. So, I think that PALS sort of serves, they're not an official, it's not like a PTO where they're organized, um, as such, but I think they're by O one C three, I think. Any other? Yeah, so they register for that, and they, um, they do function like a TEO, if there is some more, um, sponsoring things, doing nice things for staff, fundraising, um, supporting students in any way that they can, basically. Um, and, you know, I would like it as a partnership to, to something similar, that, you know, we have a newsletter that, um, Ms. Jerry does, and there's some PALS activities in there, there's something that CPA's doing, we can do that activity in the future, like, just, you know, I don't, I don't see that that'll be an issue to you, Ms. Jerry. So I hear that the district supports PALS with, um, which is the newsletter, is the, is the, well, what would you call that? Not, you don't call it a billboard in school, but the,
Simplest in Board.
Bulletin Board in the school, what about also distributing materials that PALS can create? Even though I do understand it's not a school's quadrant, actually.
I can probably, something.
Yeah, there's, there are multiple, but, so.
Um, PALS is new for me as well this year, obviously, so I'm having to talk to Mr. Marson, talk a little bit about PALS. Um, we do have a bulletin board, this year is a little bit different, um, but there is newsletters that will go out, will support communication, if PALS wants to push something out, they, like, um, they said, they will organize things for the staff, they provide support for field trips, lots of, there's funding issues in there, which is different than what you're saying there as well. Um, but it's a lot of, like, communication back and forth, how they can help support us, and we support pushing out the information, providing opportunities, talking about things that we'd like to do, you know? Um, give the kids some additional experiences and things like that, PALS will support us that way.
I guess the only thing, uh, wait, yeah. I guess the only thing I, whoa, I wanted to say, not necessarily mine here, but, I was pretty impressed with myself here, this little brochure that I did, because I have to make one for my gaps, so I'm like, oh, let's do it. So, even if Karen and Maddie want to take a look at this, even just having the ability that the special education staff, they know more, they know more, they know me, they know solid quite well. Um, even just taking a look and making sure there's nothing in there, so the special education staff has these, I'll print them, I'll hold them, and if they find a name, that they, they benefit, then that would be even a partnership, and, and, and them having these in case they want to do that. I was pretty impressed you could scan that little thing and get, get us to, I was like, yeah, check this out.
I'm just gonna, um, say, instead of trying to go back and forth, it probably makes sense for Karen,
Yeah.
for us to get together, or Karen to get together, but, um, there's, um, so need and, you know, collaborating, thinking ways that can, um, partner, that makes some, okay, sense to me.
After May twentieth, it would be absolutely a hard time. And they have to pull it.
Thank you. Yes, thank you so much.
Say, thank you. Thank you very much. We'll, you know, I guess, I, it sounds like Ann Arbor is definitely in favor of working this out, and stuff doing it the right way, so we will continue the conversation, if we see or, uh, later have something for more in place. Thank you, Bill, for Karen. Explain any more, if you.
So my question is, at this point, do we need a vote to move this forward? Because I never want this just to stand and say, this is a great presentation, and here it sits.
Um, I don't think there's a motion, or something kind of creepy, um.
It does sound like there, it can be a complete motion, because it sounds like they're looking for something similar to PALS. So I would certainly support a motion to formalize some sort of collaboration, partnership, because the schools are the heart of our communities, especially the next children. I think that would also give a clear direction to the administration of what our intention is, even though we don't have everything, you know, dotted out right now, so.
Is there another one word that?
So I would make a motion to do the process, uh, to associate with, um, CPAC, joining the organization, um, CPAC organization, joining, I'll second.
All right, the motion is set, in session. All right, and on the table. All right. Well, it's, it's, hey, hey, Dex, I mean, something that, you know, this is just spitballing an idea, but, you know, once we start to go down this road, you know, we can talk about what the meeting stuff was like, and if you want to talk about having, adding, as more of our meetings, and having a more rapport with the meetings once a month, and stuff like that, but we can add it all as details.
If we, if these are,
Yeah, don't talk to you. Perfect. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much for the help.
Okay, and I will say, with the two, it's nice to hear something that's not completely, and I feel like the building, it's starting to feel almost harmless, this is good.
Also not budget-related.
Uh, all right, so we will move on to seven B, elections at Ann Arbor Academy. Uh, this was carried over from a meeting or two ago, we had asked Patty to get us some information.
So we did meet as a leadership team, thank you for your note, just to make sure that I wasn't forgetting anything, um, when we, when that ask was made. Um, and we, we thought that that would make perfect sense to have elections here, we kind of talked through what it would look like in March, if we have our PD day, would everyone say it's reverse, could we do the PD, the PD day here? Even voting was done on, um, talked a little bit about the school calendar, but then, um, you know, makes sense, we rest that every year anyway, because we have the five extra PD days for teachers, and I always work with the teachers when we're choosing for those dates. So I think if there's a major election in the fall, then we just have to help the school down during the recess, um, and, and figure out what the school, what it would look like on those days, but, I think if, if I'm not, I'm not forgetting anything, just, yes, um, then I think we're clear to go.
Any questions?
Um, I would like to make a motion to hold general elections and local elections back then.
And the second? Hey, Dex, uh, motion to put through the use of Ann Arbor school facilities for general local elections. All in favor? Aye. A poll is, it's made, uh, say that in public. Hey, Dex, thank you. Um, seven C, update on the purpose of the year.
Sounds of today, your balance is one million and fifty-five thousand.
Thank you, any questions around that? That's important to have here, folks. Next item, seven D, is end your projects. So, uh, we had discussed briefly, I don't know how many meetings ago now, um, if there were some projects that we needed to be done, um, some related to items that were moved from the Warren article for upcoming meeting, um, and that helped the surplus, you know, I was, in some of those states. We talked about it, I believe, last meeting, and asked Mr. Poplin to bring us a list, um, sort of prioritized, and had some, at least rough dollar amounts. With it, he did that, um, this is my drive, but I'm releasing the board package as well, so I will turn over this talk. Uh, so the, the list you see, we've talked about many times, um, and those were the items that we either had for the budget for the next fiscal year, or items that we were gonna ask for the Warren article structure, um, at a town meeting for next full year. So with that being said, um, on that list is a roof at PA, specifically over the SNU, um, Lantern House area, for, and these numbers aren't rough, but they're, they're an educated estimate, I'd say. Um, so that roof would be fifty-five thousand dollars. Um, replacement flooring at the three schools, which is a yearly, um, item that for the first year in, in my time here, and, and that I can remember, we don't have moving forward for next year, um, which is a standard ask of twenty thousand dollars. Exterior painting, um, I spoke quite a bit about it. Up until a couple of years ago, we didn't have a good plan for exterior painting, and I think it showed. We've done items such as the SNU trim, which is from nineteen thirty-seven, we restored that with something with the, the gym at Ann Arbor Academy. Um, we try and do items specifically that we know needed, but you might not see it in jobs that are done, that you have no idea we did, because they just always looked at money. Exterior painting allows us to maintain that part of, of the facility, so we would ask for ten thousand dollars there, specifically for some work at Three Rivers, the, and here at Ann Arbor Academy. Um, we would ask for ten thousand dollars for a zero-turn mower. The mowers allow us to maintain, um, the fields and the grounds at the building, and are very important, when our zero-turn mower goes down, um, it's quite the process to get back at times for fixes and for lengths of times. So, our mower is about six, seven years old now, it's at the tail end of its life expectancy, and we're trying to get ahead of that. It will also allow us to cover more ground with the roofing out there. Um, fencing at Three Rivers, um, we kind of finagled the fencing we have for this year that you gave us, um, a couple meetings back, so we're doing some backstops now. We would like to finish those softball and baseball fields for the surrounding fence. Um, that's not necessarily the fence that covers the entire athletic field at Three Rivers, but it's, it's more so the fencing around the athletic fields, specifically the softball and baseball. Asbestos abatements, um, specifically flooring here at Ann Arbor Academy and the Hill School for sixty thousand dollars. We started abating, um, maybe two or three years ago. We got some good momentum, and we'd like to continue that. As much as our abatements aren't gonna stop tomorrow, um, staying on schedule and removing a little bit at a time is, is really gonna get us ahead of the ballgame, to hopefully someday be done with it. And if COVID showed us anything, it's projects like that. The more we can do today, the less it's gonna be today, as opposed to tomorrow. Um, replacement camera and maintenance at the three buildings for fifteen thousand dollars. We have a pretty good plan and upkeep with our system, but we have a pretty integrated system that takes a lot to maintain, um, protecting these facilities, protecting the contents, um, and the con, the number one content, obviously, being the students and the staff that are going to be going. So, that's a yearly ask, um, we've been doing that for years as well. We asked for some portable walls for the Hill School, um, as I've spoken in the past. For years, we would put up a wall, we might try to take a wall down, or they, we put a wall here, and they'd say, well, we want a wall over there. We really found, instead of the metal studs, the sheeprocks, and all that that comes with those projects, if we can get them a little bit of portable walls, for them to change the structure of their room, literally on the die, it allows them to get back to teaching those students. And it saves, and saves, and saves on the, the long run. Uh, water filling stations at PA and Hill, um, and some sink replacements. We're down to, I believe, four or five of the faucets of, of the fill stations that we need to replace. We're looking to continue that. Um, the price is more on the labor to get them in, of moving some pipes around and drains around. And with what's left, we would like to add a couple sink replacements, possibly at, at Hill School, and possibly at Three Rivers Schools, there's no need to say. Um, and then lastly, Ann Arbor Academy, we have all these window air conditioning units, um, specifically in the classroom wing. Um, we are trying to stay ahead of those sale months at this point in time. So those were done, um, maybe ten years ago, sometime next, I'm afraid, and they don't last forever. And we're just trying to stay it, so, that's the end of the year project list. Um, so, for our other question, this is clarification, Patty. So this is, we, as we just said, we have a very heavy surplus. Um, do you need a motion if you want to spend these funds? Uh, so, questions? Yeah, there's anything. Well, we could discuss that. No, just go ahead and make the motion, you said you do that discussion.
Oh, I, um, I'd like to make a motion, but I was adding some of these items up. So, I would like to make a motion to move the placement at PA. Hopefully, we're gonna wait a little bit for the prices of one part to go down. It's crazy. Um, and replacement flooring, um, twenty thousand, exterior painting, ten thousand, zero-turn mower, ten thousand, asbestos abatement, sixteen thousand, replacement camera maintenance, fifteen thousand, portable wall, six thousand, water fill station fountains, uh, ten thousand, and that total is a hundred and eighty-six thousand.
Would it help if we could just save the two things to the bottom of the list?
Yes, um, the items to be put on hold is fencing, twenty thousand, TRS, and AC replacement, five thousand, at PA.
I'll second that question.
Is there a discussion on this end of the table before I get this deal on?
My two more, my clarification question, um, if these items are listed in order of priority, um, I believe that's supposed to ask, I just want to have insurance, thank you.
So they are what they are. Um, as I've said, the, the roof is my number one priority, and everything else falls below that. Personally, I wouldn't, I, I wouldn't put it on the list if I didn't believe the importance. I believe there's true importance there. If you were to vote on something, I can totally appreciate the process of holding off on this or that, or this or that. And if I felt that we were in dire need, I would honestly speak up. So where I would speak up on that list right now is that one roof. Questions? The first question is, uh, to Ann on the motion, so you're twenty-five under. What, where, where are you moving that from, specifically? I guess it just been here.
Uh, fencing, twenty thousand.
Okay.
And five thousand, AC replacement.
Okay. Um, I guess one of the things, I, my, my question was, uh, concerning the AC replacement. This would only be at PA, the other schools don't need attention in those areas at this point in time, so the others still don't, so, okay. Um, and, I guess where, where I gotta come from on this is, uh, after your end of the year projects, that brings the surplus, that's a standard down, down to eight hundred fifty-four thousand. Um, so it concerns me, and it's a concern in a sense that it will give us a false level of the tax rate, moving forward, um, from, you know, from the time this gets, goes back, and then, and each, whatever, departments, revenue.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, you know, sets the tax rate, people even see their taxes come down. And, you know, I want, would I like to give it all back absolutely, uh, all of us immensely. But, I think part of the problem is going to be with all this going back, that we're, I mean, even at eight hundred fifty-four thousand, being returned, I think it's still too high, looking forward to the stability of the tax rate. Um, I would like to see more, um, that's why pulling, you know, to me, and pulling off the fencing and the AC, um, is, if we have it right now, we, we should do it right now, um, rather than adding it into the budget, down, growing after some, we've seen this false tax rate that we're gonna get next, hit with next year. It's, it's not gonna be real looking forward. I mean, it'd be real right then and there, but it won't be real in the years to come. So we're gonna have this big spiky-looking tax rate going on the following year. And I'd like to see it all in there, and I would not be opposed to a little bit more, maybe to get it, you know, lower, maybe down to eight hundred thousand, or even lower, right? If we can, as we have it right now, that's been appropriated. I think we should absolutely use it as best we can.
I think we should absolutely use it as best we can to first of all stabilize the tax rate better and address needs that the school district has, as we have this one here right now. And that's why I am on it. So I'd like to, you know, if you, if I can sway to amend it to include everything.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention too that this, it doesn't have to be the final list tonight because in a few weeks Amber is going to close spending and purchase orders of the schools and we will definitely have more money. She can actually guarantee that because she doesn't know at this point, you know, generally closed his co-mercular lines in the schools and Amber doesn't know that export in Iran can all of a sudden be $3,000 dollars since we're three years old. So in the next kind of weeks, more will be free up. Just keep updating me on that number. I just wanted to make sure that in case we get the number back, we have to consider the year.
So just a clarifying question. It's spend it because we got it and spend more that way we're not putting back more into the tax rate? And what's the percent or number percent, what's the additional budget that we're asking for in a couple of weeks? Is it additional a million that we're asking for? I'm just being conservative on this side and yes, it does bring our tax rate down lower, but we don't know how they're going to vote next week or in two weeks. So this was my concern. I'm showing the residents that we need these items done, but I'm showing the residents that we're putting thought into it. And just because we have a very large surplus and it's going to make the tax rate go down lower and then maybe the next year will go higher again, we're still being conservative and we're being just for the sound.
Yeah, I understand. I'm working on that. But I guess what I'm saying, and it does sound, in my head, it sounds bad what I'm saying. And I may not be putting it across the way I need to, but you know, we saw it, you know, a few years ago when we had the surplus came back and then, you know, everybody's tax rate really, it impacted it in a positive manner for everyone. But then the following year, it didn't. And there was a lot of uproar about that because that tax rate, we really wanted to try to get to where it's like just flat or maybe a slight incline, whatever the case may be. And I'm not saying spend all of it, but I'm saying, you know, if you look at AC replacement, this year we do it for $5,000 and we know how things, if we move forward, get more expensive. So if we don't do it this year, we do it next year, maybe it's $6,000. And maybe there's units that fail along the way that have to, you know, be replaced, you know, because they were at a higher cost. Right, we're buying, let's say, make up a number 10 of them, but we have to buy one. So a 10 at $500 piece, but buy one there, $700 a piece, you know, so trying to look at it positively that way. And the fencing, again, it's only going to get more expensive. And like I said, I don't want it to sound this way. If we got it, we should spend it. I don't want it to sound that way at all. That's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is because we do have it, we should address the dire needs that, you know, if it's on this list, then Josh thinks it's a, it's a serious. And I think we have the trust in his judgment. He doesn't come with to us with its hat in hand very often. And, you know, I mean, I've been looking for those options. If we don't need to move on it, maybe if we can push it out, maybe we should table it to see what it actually is at the end. And yeah.
Well, we have a motion and a second on floor. Can we call the votes if there's anything on it?
I've got one instantly, most of you guys, I think, on the table for it. So I, I can see both sides are being discussed right now. You know, getting rid of that 25, I don't think you stay in the world. I read what Jean said, a few years ago, we need, go, go, leave back a million. It does spike the tax rate and then there's highs and lows. And I think that's not necessarily a terrible thing if people understand that happens. From my time in the electric community the past two years, there's a lot of folks who just don't understand how the whole thing works. And that's completely understandable because it's a mess of a system. It's, you know, school districts budgets and town budgets don't line up time wise at all. The whole process is weird. So I think it just needs to be said, and I'll say it again on May 1st of our meeting, that we do need to recognize these surpluses and some of them, this is a much bigger surplus than the guest group is just during the year and froze the budget a long, long time ago. But, you know, some people have the misconception that a budget surplus at the end of the school year means they should be getting a check in. That's just not how it works. So like Anne said, a budget makes years, yep, I don't remember the number, but around really now. If we years back, years back, $2,000, the town could use that money to offset the tax rate for next year and it doesn't come back in a check, but it does help. And so I think whatever we do here, it's all the same money. You spend it now or spend it later with caveat, like Jean said, things could be more expensive this year. So I would certainly support all of this, but I'm also okay with approving this now. And I don't think approving any of these now prohibits us from approving more than at a later date. So everybody's ready? Great, so there's a motion, one in a second? If it, and I'm going to try to paraphrase in a way I want to tell, in some cases we don't have a motion. There's been a motion to fund all of the items on the list provided by this, with the exception of $3,000 for fencing at TRS and $5,000 for AC replacement at PA.
Yes.
Good. All papers? All this? All right, opposed, suspensions? Cool. So and I think, Andy, sorry, we can revisit this when we get here once. That's the one nice thing about the move meeting, I guess, we are meeting on May 1st to have a better idea of what the surplus is actually going to be than we've ever had So, thank you. That was signal B. So by signal B. General assurances, I don't know what that means, Barry.
Sure. So each year for any entity that's receiving federal funds, which we do, we get grants from the federal government and some of them flow through to the Department of Education, we have to make assurances basically that we're following the rules, following the laws. And each year we submit a document versus, yes, we are abiding by all the rules. And a few years back, the department requested, actually now requires us to mention this at a board meeting and to share them with the board and to ask that the board chair initial all pages to indicate that we're using them. So for the past few years, these have been on agenda and then passed off to the chair of the board.
Is there a time for a motion?
Well, we can't write our grant until we get them in, so we're trying to get them in very well.
So if I, if I said, if I gave them a warrant, a couple of days, they were using it, they let me know if they have any time before I write it down. Right, end of that. Get a chance to ask you, they may be about closing business Friday, and then we'll forget any concerns.
My question is just, is this a form that is provided to each school district, the state, so they all say no matter what district they're probably doing, it's not a document that we create?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. I also want to say thank you to Anne for making sure that the board members all have opportunity to review this before putting your talking call in.
Yeah, maybe it's 20, so it'll be 23.
Thank you.
Any other special note on that? No. Yeah, I want to, seven, that facility is used to, this one I actually have it added. I don't know that we need action tonight, but I wanted to start a conversation. Mr. Coughlin, Patty, I've gotten, I've gotten emails from at least three different parties that, I mentioned organizations, the people, but the rec program in Pembroke, junior Spartans or Friends of Football, as well as some of the, some of the sports, I guess. And I think the biggest concern after kind of having some conversations going on with that is the use fee itself. And of course, the guidance we're now putting is still with our practice, the price for that is going on. So as I understand it, that is only charged on the weekends and is basically to cover the overtime, the pay that the custodian or other building or setting that needs to be here, a lot, a lot supervised building, things like that. Is that, all this?
Absolutely. So pretty much if it's a non-scheduled party, like an extra assignment, we're coming in extra, we're billing out for the customer.
Yeah. So I don't, I don't, I think this is more of a, you know, something to put in like warm mates' ears to see if, you know, what it may mean for them, let them see if there's interest in it. But the concern that was brought to me was that these are all Pembroke specific programs for almost exclusively Pembroke children and therefore, you know, Pembroke taxpaying families. And the feeling was that they're the ones funding these decisions. So obviously we can't ask people to work on a weekend without paying one and we can't. I would certainly wouldn't be comfortable handing out a key to this bill or having events made maximum of those. But I've been wondering if there is an appetite for giving an estimate of what this costs in overtime on an annual basis and trying to roll some of that funding into our budget. Now, I say that before I have any influence. My first thought is if we're talking $15,000 a year, generally even in a normal year, our surplus is going to be much more than that. You know, that wouldn't, I don't think the taxpayers would, even though it's, it doesn't even have to be planned for, if we end the year with $100,000, we can use $15,000 to fund these things that our community programs can be run without each family having to pay whatever is upfront, that would be great. Now, if Josh were to come back and say, no, when I looked for the past year, it's $120,000, then I'd change my team. And again, I don't know if we have to figure this out tonight. I just wanted to bring it to you guys, kind of see where you were at and let you know what those concerns are expressed. Thanks for your comments, questions?
I'm going to ask that you let John speak in just a second, but I just wanted to comment on the budget piece. All of our, I agree completely that it's for children, they're the community, and the taxpayers are funding this no matter, you know, which budget it comes from. I guess my worry or my wonder is that we put together a budget for educating the children in this town, we have a cost associated with that, like the poor people cost. There's a separate budget in town for providing police services, so that they are separated and they are reported out to the Department of Revenue Administration. So I just have a, I'm just not sure about the mixing of, you know, paying out of our budget even though it's the entire community. That was just one thing that I was thinking about. Do you mind if Josh were to add to this?
I would just add, you know, our number one responsibility is our students and staff of the Pembroke district. Below that on the list, just below it, now becomes in my world at least, the Pembroke Racks, some cook uses sports, all those extra curriculars that we can help guide. When it comes to invoicing for extra use, we're, our buildings are open pretty much 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, Monday through Friday. If Dan has a dance on Saturday that we're open for from 4:00 to 10:00 PM and say some cook athletics can get in that gym, that's probably a bad example of dancing and basketball. But if we're here on that scenario and I can provide that space for them, we don't invoice that. The only time we do any invoicing is strictly for the custodian fee because it's an improved cost to the district for the extra activity. And I guess one, one example would be in our world, the police here, we have a great relationship with the police. We have a great relationship with, with all the departments around there and that's what makes Pembroke Pembroke. So if the Pembroke police comes strolling through Three Rivers School at 12:00 PM, they're not going to charge us. That's what they do. But if we bring the Pembroke police in for a detail because we have a bonfire or I have a tree that's getting cut down on the side of the road, they invoice me. And in, in my world, obviously I have to pay for that because that's the extra. So with, with the local groups, we only charge them for the custodian on the extra assignment. Whereas vice versa, if it was a group out of Concord, we charge them for the room per hour, we charge them to have the new utility fee, we charge them the custodian fee. So they're, they're getting what we can offer. Vice versa, it also helps me allow the scheduling, the process to play through, the controlling what's happening and not happening. You know, often we're scheduled, often we get a call on Thursday and say, hey, can we use that gym on Friday or on Saturday? And we always say yes. And what happens is it's a wear on the crew. And selfishly, it's a protection of my crew right now as well. You know, they're working and they're working and they will always say yes. But a lot of times that Thursday request for Saturday then becomes a Friday cancellation. Or a Saturday, we need till 12:00 PM and then they only, they only stay till tonight yet. And that, it's just a wear on the crew on that aspect as well. So there's, there's a lot to this, but I don't want to charge them. But I believe the extra assignment causes the charge to go. And I think that's going to be your standard process in that least school district.
I appreciate all the clarifications, but my information is never that I stand for. So I appreciate that. Any other, like I said, I'm not looking very sort of soon, that's why I kind of told the issue out there.
Thank you. So what you're saying, if, if some cook uses soccer fields, we're not charging them for that because that's not anything that we have to maintain?
Yes, well, not only are we not charging them, Monday through Friday, in this case, we're not charging them Saturday and Sunday because I don't have to staff that. So they're, they're getting there as well. I'm not staffing Saturday and Sunday if they're asking to use the soccer field out there. And we're giving them that. We're making sure it's maintained, we're making sure it's playable, we're making sure it's safe. And I'm not sending them an invoice at all, but unfortunately, when they come inside, we have to be here.
Yes.
And it only happens on Saturdays and Sundays, holidays, or say a vacation week where, you know, to be honest, we've started closing the smaller buildings down on vacation weeks a lot earlier as opposed to spreading those hours. Because it's a safety of the crew. You know, if, if my crew, if I only have three people at the Hill School or two people or if there's a vacation and I only have one person, they can only get so much done and there's that maintenance side of maintaining these facilities that they need to do during that week, but I have to auto notification request as well.
Right. So what I hear is that you're working with each of these individual groups and charging only what you actually need to charge. And these groups also do fundraising and they also have, I know they're all nonprofit, but then you have a surplus that they use to pay these in case there's something else that comes up. So it sounds like you're being extremely reasonable and beyond reasonable.
Thank you.
For what we actually have to charge. I don't think, and what I've heard, what I've heard, which may not be 100%, is that these groups don't want to be charged anything. And I don't think that's feasible for this even the cost of electricity. So I appreciate.
And I appreciate that. We truly do work with the groups. And I get their thought process of, oh my God, we have to pay for 10 hours on Saturday. But you have to pay, that's just for the custodian. So us, the school district, we're not losing on that. We are giving them that electricity, we're giving them that toilet paper and the water and everything else because they are of all the people and that is what we can support them.
Do you have questions for me?
I did, but Anne, three questions.
All right, thank you. Appreciate all of that. Thank you. And so we did add a 7G to this meeting. So I think you have all had specific questions and I just wanted to kind of refresh my memories about the information for the meeting. So as far as, do you want to introduce all of that?
So this little district meeting is the Saturday, May 1st. We all need to be there by what's on, what's on the weapons school board there.
Like our task force.
Well, to me, Mr. Sherwood did ask. Well, to me, Mr. Sheriff did ask that we, you know, because the social distancing to have about two school members, I don't think we gave a number, I, I was something company to, to agree, to sit up front. There was some discussion about some other tasks that the school board members need to have. I think if we figure out what does task or who's going to sit up front, we can just go to the mic runner, whatever other tasks made needs to be assigned. But we know that walking in the door, point one eighty to be there, those are just legitimate things we can decide on tonight to make that Saturday a little bit easier. We all go in with knowing what the expectations are of us and we'll just, I'll make the day a little bit better. Just walk in the door.
I don't want to count residents. Can you have Josh talk about what he's got? I mean, he's a favorite, you know?
So right now, we are, our setup plan is for the gymnasium. We plan on starting everybody in the gymnasium. Once we get full, we'll, we'll migrate to other areas. Within the gymnasium, we will somehow section off an area for the non-masters, as talked about in the last meeting. And cycle everybody in. I will have, I will be here personally and I will be, I will have two of my best guys on staff. So with that, we are willing to do whatever it takes if that means counting bodies and closing the door, not letting anybody in, and then moving them to say the cafeteria as secondary and the auditorium as the third spot. We are willing to do that. We've established the library is going to be the fourth spot, just as Tom would say, the C option. And we are working on the fifth spot. And we're going from there on then. With that, once the meeting starts, there will be three of us on staff and we would be willing to be the mic runners in those rooms as well. So I hope that can alleviate some of it. It doesn't get us into that fourth or fifth room if we go into that. But I'm sure through collaboration, we can make that work.
That's awesome. Thank you very much. Do you know what time the doors are going to be opened?
I think I probably have a seven o'clock start for my, my crew. We, days like that, but just try and get here early. So then the meeting will be set up on Friday, just as, to ease the burden of your thoughts, we will, my guys are actually going to set it up on Thursday, the staff guys will come in on Friday. Everything will be tested so that we can all leave on Friday, come in and just turn the buttons on on Saturday.
Awesome. What else? So I just, I don't want to speak out of turn, but obviously, we'll be at the table as both chair and budget committee. Where my thought would be to have Jean with me to use their budget alternate with anybody else has. I don't know, to be up and know how many of us are there that are funded.
I think Anne might speak for what happened at town meeting. I think there was two or three people on each side. So I, I set up two of the cafeteria tables on each side and then they did whatever from there.
We get the flexi glass.
Yeah.
Awesome. So do I or do, I don't know if Jean would be interested in that?
Do you have whoever with you?
Yeah. So are you guys okay with Jean and I? Jean, are you okay? All right, yeah. And Jean and I, Amber. And then I'm not sure who, Mark is going to bring in, but I assume Mark and David and I don't, there's a chair. Do you know if they've had any conversations about that?
We had, so Mark and David are. Thank you. So Mark is okay, he's from budget?
Yeah.
And who's Dave?
Go, so you're going to be there?
No, no, because it's just the school. So you're looking for your school partner, Cindy?
Yep.
The questions I have about, we have a lot of feedback about handicap. So we were asking if residents who are handicapped, if they come in the entrance to the gym from the parking lot, if we only allow handicapped to come in, it was just too long for them to walk from their car all the way down here.
So you're looking for extra handicap spots?
Yeah, just right outside the gym, if the handicapped people, residents can come in through the gym door that faces the parking lot.
Put the park in that circle?
Not in the circle, just.
Behind the gym?
Behind the gym.
So extra spots as well, or just to have those doors open?
Right, it was just too far for them to walk. They were just asking if they could come in the backside of the gym.
Oh, the fire door.
Yeah, just for me to go. And then do we have extra boxes? Or are we having everyone go to vote if there's a ballot, if they're all going into one room?
I have a clock, but.
Do you have two?
Yeah, okay. I'll, I'll reach out, I gotta take some notes there. I'll reach out to Paul.
Because I can get here probably, I would think nine, like too early, but probably like nine fifty and just flow where we're needed. I'm going to ask you because I know you know. So is, what kind of official, does it have to be an official ballot box? I mean, assuming we can't just provide something, there has to be a ballots, I mean, it's supposed to be blocked, so that's probably, we need to go through a gym at the town, because he's official and jury of elections, is our group. Also, I'm sure they have a tournament thing.
So either Tom or Tom's everything, or Cindy can have a second person to monitor the box at all times. So if they're, they don't want to hold all going into the, for all of these other rooms, all going to the gym, then we need to make sure.
So my only question with the back of the gym for the handicap entrance? I tried, she's yelling at me. My only question is if we open those doors for the handicap, how would we have to have somebody there so they're checking in? Sorry, I just.
Yes, yeah, I, I'll take charge of that. Because are we registering them as they come in?
That, that's how I would see it.
So they register as they come in and then they will just, you know, just use some of the workloads and. Thank you. I was just wondering if we could encourage people to show up before ten o'clock? The meeting starts at ten and historically, we have a lot of people show up like fifteen minutes before the meeting starts and that's a lot of people registered for our meeting. So I think it would be fair to ask people to, you know, try to show up at least thirty minutes early because there is that registration process and typically the line is queued out on board. So I think it would help us get started, get started in time, not only that, but now we're going to allow for social distancing. So the lines will be even longer than typically what we see queued. We can put something out, they only, we can put something on the sign, but my question is what time can they start first? We heard, you know, could we say registration will start at what time?
I think there is not a set time. You know, like you can't open the ballot box like now. It's not like an official ballot.
But you'll be sitting there checking them in. So what time do you guys see ready?
They can check in as early as eight. I mean, as early as someone is there. But I was going to suggest more, usually we only have like three booths, so I would suggest at least five. I'm aware it's going to be a large turnout. And also, there's only three supervisors on the checklist, so I would ask Cindy, who's going to be the other people checking them in? But we can start checking at any, anytime. It's not like, it's not like an election that you can only order certain times, but we can start checking in as early as people feel comfortable. But I would definitely suggest at least five different elements.
I've got a note to call Tom when we.
If we can.
Call Cindy too.
And we can also borrow all that information from the town. You know, the letters, you know, the line, we can clear.
Perfect. So I guess just quickly, some general information, I'll see if there's anything else that we can talk about. So as April mentioned, the meeting starts at ten AM. Come early if you can, if you're an able-bodied person that can sit for a little bit longer, come a little bit earlier, be self-checked in, best seat in the house. You know, a lot of information. Is it, primary location is the PHM. If the PHM is at the recommended capacities for social distancing, it will be guided to multiple patients. And as a reminder, there is a mask policy still at the schools, so masks are highly encouraged. Any, did I hit all of them? Yes, they're regarding. Thank you. Was there any other information? Joshua, he, with his group, which one might, which is awesome?
Thank you so much for bringing us down for today. That's absolutely amazing. I appreciate that. I just have a curiosity question. Oftentimes, we might see a student group here doing something here in town meetings because it's a great opportunity to interact with the townspeople. Any idea if something like that will happen this year during COVID?
Thank you. Are you referring to National Honor Society or are you talking about?
Any.
I can check, I did hear that they were going to do childcare, but I haven't confirmed that, so I didn't do that. I know, going back a few years now, there would be like, you know, we have some on state national. We haven't done that in a few years.
Men's Alice, I think I've seen before, something like that.
Adults, I think that was done, that was one of the, maybe, and they, they do that. I would be hesitant thinking whether or not I love having singing, just like a quote or not. Otherwise, I would look at National Honor Society.
Thank you. We're done next one question. So I put the packet in your board drive, but we did find out today, I wasn't sure, there are a hundred and fifty town reports I've heard are in your possession. So I think we would pull that packet apart because the whole MS packet is already in the town report. So I think we already made copies of the tax impact sheet and we want a copy of that one to give out. So those are the two additional pieces. The other stuff is all in the town report. I wanted to know though, how many do you think we should have on hand, because if we have a hundred and fifty town reports, we may want to make additional handouts for those people that may not get the town report. So how many would you anticipate?
It's so, so hard to say. The number that comes to my head is three hundred and fifty safe, but I know we've passed that before, you know, which were typically down this year for COVID, so I, I don't know.
I mean, we are in school application too, so I mean, we can have Dan and the ready to run to the office if we need to.
Not, not that it will happen, but in theory, some of those booklets, the people will be doubling up from town meeting. It might, and should already have some of those booklets.
Yeah, and husband's wife's share, so what, I, I don't know. What do you think, Anne? You've got a lot of students.
Your number, I was thinking for number two. Just because, just the word on the street, you know, and I know a lot of people say, I'm going to go, I'm going to go, but I think your number's dead on.
And then Mike's on Patty, if you, you did something, you can set up somebody.
Could that also be put on the notice? Could please bring your book if you have.
Sure. You got it.
Okay, and then last thing, did the board summary look okay to you guys? We tried to just, you know, help people understand what they're coming on.
Yeah, I, I mean, I'm glad, the more time we've had since we've kind of, you know, went through the more articles, the happier I am with the decision to kind of clarify this thing down and keep it a little bit simpler this year. I think the things that are around there are fairly clear. I think the summary summarizes it quite well and people will have an understanding of what's going on.
Just one quick question. We only had seventy people at the town meeting, so the hundred and thirty books, did we ask, they drove or he has left over? I can do that.
The question was just asked to me today, how many do we have? So I don't know what was asked on the back end.
All right, do you want me to check to see if my team, he has left over? We didn't. And then that way I can sign up tomorrow and let Maddie know and what we have for extras.
Absolutely.
Kathy's going to be in class in the morning, so we do have time. That would be fantastic. But yeah.
Okay, so we'll try to have three hundred total of either town report and or any else.
One of the things that I, I ended up picking up also was getting, you know, April's suggestion, getting people there early, can we do a one fall now? I mean, I, I know that's probably only going to go out to the parents that have children enrolled in schools, but it's something that would, you know, get out there and maybe help get the word around, you know, get there as early as possible. So if we do something like that, that'd be helpful.
I absolutely love the idea of using the tools that we have available, but I think it's very important that we avoid the illusion, whether that's the intent or not, that we may be trying to stack a rope, but only notifying people who are registered for one fall now, especially in schools. I think we would be very careful about that. If there's an intent to notify, then it needs to be equal lateral across the whole community and not just for one separate people. And I'm totally underfunds the tools again, but I'm very concerned about what message what sense to be given there, Mark. Thanks.
We usually have it on the side, so we can have a time to read.
Well, I just think in that, it has to save the sound. What about the others?
All right, so I've got some homework here. I'm going to make a couple of calls. The town sheriff and Stephen hired and they've got about ballot boxes and a whole lot of other things. If there are, you know, any, any of the consequences come out of those, I will certainly send out a call to you as soon as I can. Is there anything else anybody wants to say about the meeting?
Is there a specific ask that women like school board members to arrive?
I, I don't think so. There, you know, we can't really, fretting, fretting isn't forehand anyway, or it's considered a meeting. So, you know, I would just say that as long as we're all there for officially gets underway, it doesn't sound like, maybe we're going to have specific jobs. I guess I, you know, if you're thinking about that day, maybe two, an hour or two beforehand, clear in case something comes up between now and then. So, so if somebody does need something more available, I don't really feel that way. But I don't, I don't think there's a specific requirement, since this is Josh's role, so I have the handle of Mike. And Cindy will have people handling, checking, things like that. I think we should be okay? Anything else? Sorry, I don't mean to have a backseat. Okay, then. That was that for meeting business. So we'll move on to agenda number eight, board reports. Oh, Brian doesn't have to be on there. Right. So move on to S U board slash exec board. Was, was there an exec board meeting again or just a full board?
Yes, a full.
So it was a S U full board meeting on last, the Tuesday, Thursday? I don't remember. It was last Tuesday. I was in there when I went in. It was extremely short. There was basically two pieces of business. There was reorganization of the board, which is kind of a formality, because it's the tradition for a number of years to just come through the schools voluntarily. So it was Chi Chester and Dearfield. So Chi Chester group is S U board chair and Dearfield, more Dearfield office is vice chair. And it was about to offer Peter and Daddy contracts for a three-year term each, I suppose. Of note, and then the discussion was that Sarah is over and indicated that we bring something under three-year contract that is last. That said, but that was it. And I think maybe it's over in twelve minutes. So that was it for S U board. And we were in A R E A since last. Budget committee, again, with the meetings coming up. Hope everybody can attend, involve them, make decisions. Hope everybody can attend and involve in the meeting decisions. Ace.
Hey.
Hey. Uh, Hillbrow Innovation Committee. So I did talk to Mr. Floss today. He was preparing to present. I believe that our next meeting agenda is currently pretty light. Um, so my intention is to have the Hillbrow Innovation Committee, um, do their presentation of our announcement. So that brings us to first board of boards. And I started saying, I mean. Starting this here.
Thank you. Um, so this is our first week back with all of our fellows. It's been, um, it's been great to see the hallways that they're, they're wonderful, but like the kids are there. They're absolutely thrilled to be back. Um, one of my favorite things was we had a lot of our remote kinders come in. So they have a full class now. And they were like all decked out in their first day clothes and they were just so excited. Um, so that's been great to see. We're going through the normal thing to do at the beginning of the school year. We're looking at building community as a priority right now because you have two communities and classrooms that are coming together. And what's unique right now is we're doing everything that we would from the beginning of the year at the end of the year. So that's been a challenge, but, um, we're working through all of that. Lots of community building right now, um, routines and procedures, all the things that we would do with this new environment right now. So that's kind of our focus. Um, while we make it, it was now we have five total days, making the most of this time. Arrival and dismissal has gone really well. I'm crazy proud of, of the full staff. I mean, they are just on and we didn't see, we didn't skip beyond anything. Um, we still have by eight o'clock, everybody's in, just a minute or two after we had, I think today, because we've been tracking it. Um, we had 84 cars. We didn't have by 2:31, we had everybody in. So we're really excited that we're able to make those changes and not see a giant new car. Um, we have a use of an outdoor classroom now. The kids are out there in STEM. Slow down to the, with this.
I'm so excited.
I know, I get that way. Um, I was surprised. I thought I was being slow. So we have an outdoor classroom now that, um, the kids have been actually working to create with our staff, uh, the high-line teacher, Alex Jones. They love it. It's the highlight of their day. Um, and it's great because now other classroom teachers are starting to use it. So for example, a first grade teacher today took the kiddos out. Um, to the scavenger hunt. So it's those types of things that we're using our outdoor spaces. The kids are really engaged. And that's been wonderful. We have some seating out there, like logs and learning and other ways of, of using our outdoor spaces. So that's coming up. Um, just we, just want to update on furniture. We still not received it. However, we are fully, every kid has seats. Because we were able to, um, partner with another district that had seats available. Josh's crew in a split second got went over there, got them from another district, brought them in. We had chairs for the kiddos like on the 11th hour. So we were able to start, um, so that we were beyond appreciative of. We were gonna make it work, but that was one of those things that was gonna be great. Um, so we should be getting our, we should be getting our furniture. We've had it this week.
I'm not holding my.
Yeah, we're not supposed to talk about the name, but they told us one thing, but we made it work. The kiddos are back and they all have seats. Um, so it's just been great. It's been one of the highlights of the season, but we're not excited. Um, it doesn't come without its challenges for staff and everybody. Um, but we're dragging along, so it's been great.
Questions from this area?
How many remote students we have?
Question was how many remote students do you have?
I can double check real quick and get me the number because it's just changed, but we had almost a huge majority of them come back. Like until people over 20 came back, so we're under probably about 30 now. Thank you.
I'm gonna ask all of you this question eventually, so you start running that one. Just wondering, um, any concerns that have popped up this week, things that you may not have heard about? No, you know, busing is still up there, but, but anything new that, that really kind of caught your eye or that, that we should know about?
Nothing that caught our eye. We did bring up transportation. Um, they're looking at monitoring the numbers on the buses at this point. They're able to get there, the kiddos are able to get there on time. We go about a need for double runs. One concern is they didn't show the parents who have chosen to continue to drive and drop off their students. They still continue to do that. I think, um, we've had some parents who are part of going back to bus, like you worried about that potentially being a concern. Um, but other than that, no, I mean, you guys get all the notifications for things that are going on as far as cases and all that in the building. So we're navigating a lot of quarantining of students. Um, those are the typical things. Unfortunately, they're typical now that we're working on. But other than that, um, it is a challenge the beginning of the year trying to get to the end of the year. So I just, I do want to know that, you know, our staff, they are working so hard. I am so proud of them. I'm very thankful for that. So I hope you guys, you know, can understand that that's, that's something that they're working on as well.
Yes. All right, just for my.
This is our second week, uh, that we've been all the way. And once we get these through the title, we, we, we make some adjustments. Now, like Wendy was saying, staff, uh, it's interesting because the topic went above and beyond before and now we've gone down to staff. Um, it's pretty amazing to, uh, uh, with just traffic concerns, we got a few of those, uh, throughout the college volunteers and everything that we work. The next day, you know, the rotation of volunteers to the office. Um, I can't say enough about the staff and how, how much time and effort they're putting into this. Sometimes people forget that we went from really three types of way of teaching from in the 20 days remote and in-person to now almost all in-person. That's quite a shift in how you plan and how you organize yourself. And on top of it, you get the kids there. So, um, I'm very proud of the staff. Uh, the arrival of dismissal has been quite a, quite numerous. Um, I'm very relieved, to be honest. You know, the first week, uh, there was somewhat of a panic when I looked out at the end of the day. I think we must have been pretty drunk a lot, uh, to the three of us, uh, with cars. Um, and, uh, today we were all setting numbers at the end of the morning. Uh, first morning, you know, same thing. This is, uh, like Wendy said, this is the first day of school, like the fifth time this year. But, um, everybody was on time. Everybody was excited, you know? And as the week goes on, people sleep in a little later, you know, they're, uh, like, they're quite on time. But the morning has gone very slowly, um, congested. On our campus, it's been a lot less. Uh, a lot of people driving the prize. I wanted to count the students and everything. So, um, that has gone well. It is something that we began with. Uh, getting a lot of feedback, certainly from staff, then should we keep this process next year or not? Uh, fiscal pressure, remember the buses are going out on the building, the cars are coming in front of the building. And everybody's been patient. Uh, police has been working with us. Chief has been down there. He wasn't even available. He's there for three or four days helping with our traffic. Um, so I think we got a consistent role right now and hopefully it will continue. Uh, lunches have been our other challenge. We've been going into this. We have to have a minimum of two lunches every block. We usually have one. Uh, we do have, Josh's crew has been great in setting up outdoor lunches on our tables. And we call it mobile lunch because every day, like tomorrow's gonna rain, so we're gonna, I think, we're gonna find a place for them. So, um, we, that, uh, like, not like the arrival of dismissal. It takes you a week or two to get this, with the rhythm going and the pattern on. And those have been really, uh, pretty good. We have half the class outside eating lunch, uh, on a playground and another half indoors in the rains. We have to split the outdoor group in half. Uh, then of course, again, that gives us, uh, a real issue with supervision. Uh, hopefully we've changed schedules of staff, uh, to make that happen and that's, uh, not a simple task for this time of year. So that is, that is going better than expected, to be honest with you. Um, the other piece that I think is important about the social distancing in their schools is somewhat of a deal. But, uh, students are going to rave in the classroom. They're going to rave at lunches. Uh, but it's quite a challenge in the hallways. I don't think it's great to sit in the hall. Uh, hallways, getting in line, you know, somewhere, uh, you know, three to six people in line, uh, you get 95 kids. That's a long line. And this guy could just go around the hall. It's gonna go outside. So we can, that's a challenge to do that. And quite honestly, we get to a point where you can't. Um, there's a point we have to stay. Let's do the best we can. Uh, we get this, it's, you know, you have 300 people, 300 kids, you know, this. And it's just quite, quite a challenge. The hallio is really pretty, pretty good. Um, we are down to about 26 kids a week. Um, so that is, um, it, it's good, but it's also a crazy challenge because now we have kids that are really just kind of doing the classwork, not as much in the yard. Um, and going forward, I'm not just saying that, but going forward, uh, remote is not something we can sustain. Uh, certainly, you know, we'll try to finish strong this year, but it's part of the next year's, because some chess cannot sustain. It gets really, really challenging. And quite honestly, I don't think we're gonna be the same as they are. I doubt it, I think. Education is never in person. Um, if anyone asks me, so I'll try to, uh, bring any surprises. Uh, the traffic is a nice surprise. People that we brought. Uh, I don't know if it's a surprise or not, but a nice part of one, getting right out straight with kids. Um, it's quite a, quite a remarkable thing to see. Uh, this year we had, uh, a half dozen fifth graders who've never been in the building. Um, and so we've tried to really get chance of those, not tried, we've had a chance of those kids. Uh, we've done them the day before. Um, and a lot of anxiety come back. Uh, once they're back, you see the smiles, but it gives to step through that door, uh, there's probably more kids than I got. Uh, so I don't know if it's a surprise, but it's certainly something that we're literally required to make sure it is comfortable coming back. Uh, and now that they've been back for a couple of weeks, I kind of just talk with kids around them, how's it going? Oh, I don't know, I'm on school, but they're smiling. You know, they'll say, it is kind of nice to see my friend. And one, uh, young lady today told me, my sweet cat, I'm as far as my back to bone. So I think it, you know, is slowly coming around. Um, and I have a lot who did before, right? Because we've always rode hurdles and bumps in the road that we're focusing right now. When we get back, we have to go through the, 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 the traffic or anything. Questions about here?
I just want to say thank you for your participation for your server line. Thank you. Um, we did, we have 29 of our students down from 70. Thank you.
Uh, I got a couple, not really questions, you know, comments. I had the pleasure of going to CRS last week to sign me, really moving up certain bits. Um, and one interesting thing was in the little conference room off the main office, um, Jim has come and looking at a, you know, like eight foot by four foot whiteboard that was absolutely covered with different colored posters and notes. And he asked her what it was, and she said, that's, that's not messing with the schedule. Uh, it did not look easy. So appreciate that. And also, I, I think I didn't blame that resource for this. I don't know. But I thought it was, I thought it was tough for you that the first day of school opened, they were cutting down trees right out of our road and like, not only did you have a new traffic pattern, you also had to be, you know, sign people and trees from the council. But it sounds like you weren't okay. So we moved the stuff towards. Uh, so first and foremost, as I think you all know, we experienced a loss there, you know, two weeks ago. Passing of Mrs. Montgomery. You know, the, both the staff and the students and the community of our chapter really, uh, responded to that event. They supported one another. Uh, they supported the school. Uh, and, uh, that's really been quite hoping to see. Uh, we are going to have a celebration of life for, um, Mrs. Montgomery, uh, birthday of Montgomery on Friday here at 3 o'clock. I will be out in charge. Um, and, you know, we need to send something out tonight and families and students are welcome to come to that. We wanted to do it, um, wanted to do it at a time where it would be possible for students to attend that. So hopefully we'll, we'll get it to turn out. Uh, we also, you know, we also lost, uh, Mr. Paul, uh, Tue Paulson this week. He was, you know, thinking about, um, how's and collaborations we have throughout the town. You know, uh, she was a great champion for, uh, member of schools and collaborated with us on a lot of things, particularly in terms of safety. And, uh, that will be a part of it. So moving forward, uh, we have, um, PSETs. We just finished those, SATs. And we are now in, uh, the, uh, reps of state science assessments. Uh, so those are, uh, happening this week. Uh, Amy, uh, since Mike's job, uh, organizing all of those in, uh, what I would describe as a very important school year. Um, Student Senate, I mean, Brian's here that I can share that they are, uh, working very hard, uh, to develop the near carnival for May 20th and 21st, when they're in quotes, uh, that is outside and socially distanced. Uh, it still allows for a really comprehensive experience, particularly for seniors. Uh, so that they can have some of those, write some passages together as a group. And, um, you know, our end of the year calendar is chunk full of those things. We're trying to make up for some lost time. Uh, and, uh, really looking toward that. I think we have frankly, some of our best people, um, organizing that. So it will be important to see what those students can come up with. Uh, and also, you know, I mentioned before, we have four seniors as well as four junior students on, uh, for participating in, I'm sure, school administration associations, innovations, programs. Kind of all undersold it a little bit. They were actually the analysts for their day two keynote presentation. Uh, and, um, I, I just want to share that I've heard from many of the administrators at State with how impressed they were with it. That they genuinely, uh, represented the school district very well. And highlighted many of the initiatives that I have in the school, uh, with all of their teachers. I think that's a testament, certainly to the students, uh, but also a testament to their teachers who have been creative and, uh, really, you know, everyone that I think that's talked about kind of proudly about their staff. I, certainly have those sentiments. They've really been unbelievable and they continue to do so, uh, throughout, um, for the last two weeks and will continue to do that, uh, through the remainder of the school year. To answer your question, you know, we, um, we had a lot of systems in place that, you know, once we had those like party lunches, once we had those locked in, we were pretty good to go for the most part. We had everyone there. Uh, on the 15th and, um, felt pretty good about it. You know, lunch is, it's big and weird and, um, but the students do really well. We have four lunch periods now. We will go with that. I would say, um, one of, one of the ones that I'm gonna make that I haven't anticipated is that whole idea of all of the students being in the building at once for the first time in school year. There are some soulful stratifications that need to happen, uh, whenever you come back to building. And that typically happens the first few weeks in the fall and that is now happening, uh, in April. Uh, while we were also talking about fourth quarter grades and seniors and other events. So it's kind of a lot of things that are gonna be at once, uh, but we'll get. Um, any questions back there?
Thank you. This is a quick question. Are we, um, are we still looking for the graduation? Are we willing to do a mission cast like we've asked?
Yes, not, not to you, mate. Uh, and that will be, um, I believe it's 5:30. I don't know if you can make, we have class day that day, so we will have, um, some events. We know of some academic achievements for our students. Uh, we will have a door barbecue. I don't really understand this, most part of the future outside. And then, uh, after that, our seniors will be able to go and get ready for graduation and see what they are. Hoping for a great weather. Okay. Okay, um, just a quick note, I, I, I rarely speak on behalf of the board, like, I think it's safe to do it in this circumstance. I certainly don't want it to come across as, you know, the pandemic is over and that is, it's not, but we're back. And that, that's a milestone. And I think it's just important to thank all of you in the team. And it's just important to thank all of you and the teachers that this is very weird to see, I mean, it was, it was imagined so far, I'll say. And, you know, we're coming out on the other side. Silver lining, whatever, you know, kids are just, they have lived through something that I didn't live through when I was a student. The time of us that we've been towards. They're going to want to see possibility to just, I think our administration, our teachers showed resilience and improved our modest needs picks. So I appreciate all of you. So with that, that's what it's up to here. I think we're moving to January one to nine. And I know, and April, we're waiting for some big plans of policy buyers. It sounds like they might be available for next meeting. Patty, is there anything on here that you really want us to hit tonight because it's pressing? Or is it okay when it's done?
No, I'm going to wait.
Then right, you want to do that, you guys chasing her? Yes. Sorry.
Just before we speak of some of these policies, I was wondering, and maybe you could go ahead. I'd like to make a mention of several of these that are subject to be rescinded early on. There's a tool of five decks, it's the last five under first reading. J L C D dash A, J L C D appendix A, J L C D appendix B, J L C D appendix C, J L C D dash B. I'd like to make a mention that those policies be rescinded. Thank you.
There's a similar feature, any special now? Okay. Paul, we are sending, Paul's is previously. Hi. I think I know if we see any of somebody who's there, then if there's question, kind of recap the votes for people on the phone. I'm not sure if you can see in the meetings, but I guess for now, if there's, if there's available, do that for our goal if there's an agreement. But if we have someone that's not named, we'll try and ask for number two. You know, right, those votes, we'll call them something. So we'll move on then. We are on number ten, informational items, which we have a lot for the committee.
Thank you, yes. So one item in your packet was the schedule for board meetings for next year. So I think that we try to do the same basically, but I think it's usually the first and third Tuesday of the month. It worked out that way every single time actually this year. Obviously subject to change, events that are happening along the way, but that's your typical schedule. We do, we did add a meeting, which we've been on the sheet, but it's for this year. We had added thirteen fifteen meetings to have training by the school board association. And that is going to be to get our graduation ceremony, so we need to reschedule that. I will reach out to Barrett and ask for that to change. I'm hoping that maybe he's available the following week, on the twenty-second. But I will send something out and try to confirm that. And then I think the other item is, is that we're scheduled for a session. So I don't know, maybe you could put some dates out and maybe the next meeting can confirm that. To get back with those, because I know people will just schedule applications and such.
Yeah, and I think we have a couple of available dates from Barrett and, well, I'm assuming Barrett's scheduled for the end of the semester, so if they can get some ideas. Everybody else, look at your calendars for June. We'll try to come up with a date for the inside. And I can stick with Tuesday nights, this is what we're used to. But if people are amenable and they'll be feeling this, or you know, something like that, I'm open to anything as long as it's in the plans. So maybe next time, just make sure your personal calendar is up to date, bring them along and try to come up with that.
On the school board schedule that we received, one date I did know this was November first, anyway, which is the first Tuesday of March. That's obviously an election day. So I'm not sure if that's, if that's something we want to talk about, go ahead and scheduling. This is a meeting that day. And the other question was just a question we mentioned, there is additional tape and gene added. So I didn't know if what is called or maybe June twenty-first, because sometimes it's easier to cancel if it's not needed than to add a date. So that would be my suggestion as well, yeah, of course, thank you. I think that can be checked on, I'll give you two dates, but we will.
I didn't get it back.
Oh, okay, yeah, we'll check that, thanks.
Okay.
I don't know that there isn't.
No, there's no national election, this is.
I thought we made sure of that.
Thoughts on adding a June twenty-one? And then if we don't need it, this is a good, good on the boards.
I think it's a good idea, but I was also going to ask for a July date. And we don't need, we don't need it, but what happened last March, sort of twenty twenty. So I just think maybe we could just put our data in July, based on something that we have made, just to put it on the books.
Yeah, I mean, I'm hoping for whatever the board wants to do, I guess. And I was like, it's tricky because everybody kind of scatters, but again, if I was, if people are out of town, I would be sure.
Maybe if it's okay with the board, I would ask Kathy to send out a email to each of you and reply to her if you're not available on a certain Tuesday in July. And then you can kind of come together and make a date for us.
Yeah.
We put the bus ridership numbers. I did tell to Linda because she sent me notes that these are the numbers from last week. And then I noticed all times of nine from March. And she apologized and said those are last week's numbers. So I think that must have been something for calls for achievement, just to put the numbers in. So it looks like our highest capacity for AM or PM was fifty-one in one bus. And then I think it's like, yeah, fifty someplace else. But lots of numbers in the twenties, single digits, thirties. So I don't, it doesn't even look like we turned more than two students per seat, which is great. So I guess we want to, that would be a lot, that's good news. Next meeting, just so that you're aware, if you haven't done on the board, will be now the staff. I could send something else to all staff, letting them know, making sure they knew that the meeting will then postpone so they weren't going to be now even by April fifteenth as they typically are. Let them know that we have our budget on you first and then contracts will go up after that. So we, the next meeting will be now the staff and contracts, bringing to you most first and after that meeting.
It's me. No, you can say it later.
Thank you. We already talked about school district meeting packets. We already talked about two meetings. And I did put the nurses' numbers in the drive for you. Since we're not doing decision-making makers, they, they, that spreadsheet updated. If that was helpful for you just to sort of know where we currently stand on particular tip of that regard, if that's something the board is interested in having. I do have a question about the spreadsheet, you're doing such a wonderful job keeping track of it. I actually had to go out to the DOE slash the HHS website to confirm the, the total cases. Does that sound like it could be included? Because obviously sending someone home for quarantine is obviously making someone have an active case for that being confirmed. So can we have that added to our worksheet? I didn't see that on here. Are you talking about any number? For most schools, yes, I put down on the sheet that talks about total on-site recovered, well, recovered cases, you know, in terms of comality. It's a, it's a different number anyways, the DOE is reporting. Oh, yeah, don't go by this, don't go by the website, it's never accurate. Okay, so could we get the number of recovered cases on, so I guess my ask is on this, and maybe it's on there, I just missed it. Could we get the number of recovered cases on the spreadsheet if we want to be recording, recording this going forward? I think it's important to know how many students actually tested positive and have recovered. Because you can test and still test the negative. I think it's important to, to know, I'm sorry, I did not follow you. So you want to know how many students had COVID and have now recovered something? Well, yes, because of being reported cumulatively, having people who were symptomatic and sent a testing. But I don't see anything on here about how many people were actually tested positive that matches the information the DOE is, or even someone who has COVID. Can I read? Absolutely. So at the bottom, there's current positive cases by school.
I got my clear. Total cases, correct, so I think that would be difference between, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Total current level? Yep. State also report on how many recovered. This is they, they report on the onsite and offsite, and then how it's been changed, onsite is alone. So we can get that information, I could send you some. Do you want tonight? I'm going to need that to see those box two clips, because there's a lot of data. You can sort of, that's a different way, so I'm going to try to grab the key. Just, do you want me to circle that number? Yeah. That was it, and the information comes on the chat items.
Okay, fantastic. That brings us to our second comment section. Let's see, both of us. So you have number three from before, would that go under C?
Yes.
Okay, so the board has need to know this number of the session, HRSA ninety-one dash eight four three, number two. Small letter C, which is matters, which you've discussed in public, would likely affect the person's reputation of any person other than you. Although, going on public that is three five P F, people?
Yes.
And?
Yes.
C? Yes.
And I'm going to unlock the meeting. Okay. Should be.
Looking for special like this stuff.
It's going to be all IT gets for.
Oh, good.
Okay.
All right. Is there a motion, a very not above business? Okay, we're back. Is there anything more? I, I moved that we accept the request for a child to remain at Pembroke Academy, or in the Pembroke School District until the end of the school year.
Second. Who was that?
The discussion. All fair? Fine. We have no appointments or reservations for tomorrow's day? Correct. Right. Our next scheduled meeting is May fourth, at six thirty. And the starting order format will be the same until we get the new camera microphone system. At which time, format will remain the same, but hopefully the microphone switching on will be better.
Particularly our next move is the first, correct?
Yes, while students are creating it, and then our next scheduled, regular morning meeting. All set for most future?
Check it out.
The table, the second, all right? All fair? Thank you everybody for joining us, and we'll come back.